All right, running just a little bit late, I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order, please. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord God.
Okay, thank you, and welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone at home. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Rekert.
Present.
Trustee Carter.
Present.
Okay, good to see everyone. Item four is approval of the Board of Trustees minutes for Tuesday, July 17, 2018. I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Still move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, thank you. Okay, any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any correspondence?
I do have correspondence. I have a letter here from the Peoria Heights Community Band from Barbara Larson. She says, "Dear Chief Sutton, the Peoria Heights Community Band would like to thank you and the Heights Board of Trustees for all the years of support. We appreciate very much the recent $500 grant. It will be put to good use with the purchase of new music and also to pay for our band webpage, which has been so helpful in getting new musicians. We have one concert left this summer on August 28th and hope you and the board members would be able to attend so you can all see how much our band has grown. We have large audiences, which shows how much our band is appreciated and helps to bring people to the Heights for other events. Thank you again for your support."
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That'll be all.
Okay, on to announcements. Just a couple of things. As you all know, the RFP is out on the street for proposals for the Gray Boy Building. We welcome all interested parties to submit proposals for that. And just a couple of thank yous out to Trustee Carter for all of her work on the Music Fest. And thanks to Trustee Harn for filling in for me at the last meeting. So on to trustee reports. The first is economic and community development. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Trustee Carter, police.
I have nothing on the police end, but I want to update everybody on the Music Fest. I'm sorry, I thought I did this last time and just went over my head. We had it one day, and I thought it turned out pretty good. It was pretty crowded out here. I don't think the beer sales was as much, but there were a lot of people in the Tower Park. Now, their poor brothers was having their big thing too, so I think it was a mixture of going back and forth. Anyways, I thought it turned out really well, you know. Thanks to the chief for having all the police there, and Mike, and Dave, and everybody that helped clean up. Mark and Margaret, you know, thank you very much for staying because someone got sick and had to leave. And then I didn't have my little support for the beer. He had to be down at Poor Brother's, so I was kind of running it on my own. But Mark and Margaret, they stayed back. And what's the kid, is it Jared?
Yeah, Jared.
Jared. Thanks, Jared, and his friend that stayed and helped us clean up. So, other than that, I thought it went really well for one night.
Thank you. Questions for Trustee Carter? Thanks again, Cheryl. Okay, building and property maintenance. Trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I just wanted to make an announcement that the carpet is going to be installed between August 29th and the 31st. Is there anything else you want to add to that? They're going to have to come in, probably because they're going to have to tear up and repair what the underlying slags, because they're hard telling. Because how long's that carpet been in there? Since they've been built?
Could be the original, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we got our money's worth out of it, so.
Well, and again, we wouldn't be replacing it if it weren't a trip hazard. It's literally coming unafraid, so.
Yeah.
Had some people trip on it, and thanks, Trustee Gett. Any questions for Trustee Gett?
I don't, but can we go back to the band that's going to play on the 28th? Do we have to redo our meeting? Because we have a meeting that night. The 28th is on a Tuesday.
That's next Tuesday.
We decided to not move the meeting since we moved, last year we had solid meetings at 6:30.
Yeah.
And since we moved them up to 6:00, and meetings have been around an hour, we thought that we could, you know, complete the Board of Trustees meeting and then go and enjoy the band concert after.
I'm sorry, I just.
We're open for suggestions if that, people don't think that works. Want to try it?
No, that's why, I just thought, wait a minute, we have a meeting that night.
We actually had, that actually happened last month, or the last meeting, not this weekend, but the one prior. We were just wrapping up the time they were starting, so it worked out. Meeting time, you see.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So I guess we'd be at fire. Trustee Rekert.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Public Works, Trustee Harn.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Dave Marfil provided me with the update on the pressure-reducing valve. The pressure-reducing valve upgrades on Longshore subdivision. On Tuesday, August 28th, the Water Department will be making upgrades to the pressure-reducing valve that supplies the entire Longshore subdivision off of Galena Road. During this upgrade, the entire subdivision will be without water service. Work should begin on that morning at approximately 7:00 a.m. Are you guys going to put hangers on the doors and everything? Let them know? Okay. We do not have an exact timeframe on how long the water will be off, but we are hoping for nothing more than three to four hours, but it could be longer. Once the water is turned back on, the subdivision will be under a boil order. We will be handing out door tags to the affected locations on Thursday, the 23rd, notifying the residents of the work and pending boil order. Once the boil order is lifted, we will hand out a second set of door tags. Anyone with questions can call the Water Office at 686-2375. So yeah, just, I guess as long as everybody knows. There will be some people who forget, and they'll be upset that the water wasn't on, but that's just how it goes. Also, I guess right now we're doing some blacktopping. Did you want to talk about that a little?
Yeah, Mike, both of you guys, if you don't mind, a little bit of an update, but Mr. Casey, if you could give an update on the Longview seal coating project, because last summer I was literally bombarded with complaints from people living on Longview, and you've corrected that.
Right.
And I actually have gotten lots of calls thanking me, but it was you and your crew that did it, so.
Yeah. We did Longview, Ogden and Best came back with colon, and they did a fog seal coat over it from the tar from last year that it rained pretty hard as soon as they got done, so most of the tar ran off. They put this fog coat, and it's like fog coming out of the machine, and it's a tar, and you got to let dry for like an hour, and it looks like blacktop when you drive up the road. Now, you guys drove up there or not?
Yeah, because I was wondering about that.
Yeah, it looked wet, too, like 12 hours later.
And I thought, when we first turned, I thought, oh crap, all those rocks are going to come up on my car.
You got to be flying.
But it didn't happen.
No, there was no rocks that was put down. The rocks that was put down last year stayed, most of them did. And so they just put that fog coat down and just like sealed it in. So everything just binded together, so. And thanks to the residents that they couldn't move for an hour out of the driveway, but that was only kind of.
That's not the same thing that you did down on Prospect, though, between.
Down here we did, by the old Pizza Hut, that little test strip, that's the same stuff.
Okay, because I thought we were just going to do that one test strip. I didn't realize we were going to do those side streets off of.
Yeah, they owed us for that cone, and that was like come back and repair what they, what Mother Nature messed up, so they didn't charge us for that.
Oh, okay, so that was no charge?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay.
Did they do a test strip on Forest Park Drive also?
There's two, yeah, it was a different, little bit more oil they put down there, like .08 or .8 something, to that effect, and they put a little bit thicker oil and did two test strips, so when we plow this winter, we can see if it did like the other did last year on Forest Park Drive, yeah.
I didn't see that, I didn't see it on Forest Park.
And then they did the test strip down by the old Pizza Hut, or I can't remember the name, what is that, Gotti's, whatever that place is.
Katie's.
Katie's, well, yeah, down there, so we're going to see how the plows, you know, how it handles down there, then they could come up here and do Prospect. So we're going to have to do something with that here shortly. So that's next year, but we're just kind of in the test phase, so.
Anything else you want to update us on?
That, we're doing blacktop. I started over here by the Heights Congregational Church going south off of Glen there, so the alleys get a lot of deliveries and tore up behind leaves and beans pretty much. I skipped to that, well, the next alley down, I took care of, well, put a new storm drain in there by Sheriff Pizzaz that Patrick owns.
On Durie, yeah.
Yeah, Durie, right there, so.
I like what you did with the buildup. Did you erase?
Yeah, it makes it a little better, yeah.
Maybe cars won't hit the bottom.
Yeah, I took mine up there and stuff, and now if there's something low that's on a truck or something, it's definitely on the downside. I mean, if it's real low, it could hit, so.
Yeah, but it looks better.
Yeah, it is.
Looks to bring the drain up a little higher and raise that.
And everything's kind of.
That seems like the first attempt I've ever seen, is someone trying to fix that.
Right, right. And we, I talked to Dustin, we talked about the big hill there, but then you got to get into ADA compliant, and you got to tear out that hole.
Yeah, there's fiber in that alley and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
You'd have a harder time making that work, but.
But Patrick there, he's happy, so Sheriff Pizzaz, so he is happy with that, so. That was another one. Then the alley just south of that, behind Bistro and all that, gets a lot of deliveries, so we just started blacktop of that, got about, what, a quarter way down or so today, so.
Oh, wow.
We'll finish that up tomorrow, but that's just a couple, just watching the money and stuff like that, just to, you know, get that done, and a lot of deliveries down that way, so. Then we'll be off to concrete work here after that, next week, so.
Thanks, Mike. Guys, appreciate your attitude, your enthusiasm, and give our best to your crew. Mr. Marfil, can you give us a quick update on water, please?
Yeah. I don't have a whole lot. No news, I guess is good news. Other than the pressure-reducing valve, which Brian just announced, that's all I got really to report. We've just been kind of doing daily, daily stuff. I've been doing a lot of the asphalting and stuff with the guys, kind of wearing two hats, so. That's pretty much all, you know, just the pressure-reducing valve on Galena Road. So, that's all I got.
Have you guys done the water main down there that you're planning?
No, we were waiting to get this pressure-reducing valve in, and then we're going to reevaluate the water main. So we have not done that yet, we're kind of waiting for that. That was the first step, the pressure-reducing valve, and then that would be the second step.
You think that pressure was maybe part of the problem?
Yeah, I think that, we're hoping that's, to see a difference, a drop in pressure, maybe that'll save us from having to replace that little section, so we're just kind of wait, a waiting game to see after we get that upgraded.
Yeah, because you can always, you can always do it, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, so.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Anything else, Trustee Harn?
Under Public Works, that's all I have.
Okay. On to administration and personnel. Trustee Diane Mariscal. Diane?
I just have one thing, actually. The landlord registration applicants, the interviews have been completed, and we should know who the position is going to be awarded to, probably, what, within a couple weeks?
Yep.
So I just wanted to let you know about that. Back to the police, though. I was watching our website and saw that your police officers were giving out those little gold Chiefs balls, and I thought that was really nice. I think the kids really appreciated that, so.
Thank you. We participate in that since its inception with the Chiefs, and yeah, it's a big hit with the community and the kids, and so, but thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Anything else, Diane?
No, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, on to comments from the audience. Comments from the audience, open? Yes?
Ask a question.
Please come forward if you give your name, and welcome.
My name is, my name is Joanne Bolz, and I live at 1123 East Kingman. And at the last meeting, they had a lot of talk about a 5G infrastructure upgrade that would bring quite a bit of cash to us, and I didn't quite understand if this was a future thing that's coming, whether it's coming in the near future. When, is there any idea when that's going to happen?
Illinois is going to be one of the first states that gets a lot of the 5G infrastructure put in, but we really have no idea when.
When that money would roll in our door?
No, no, it's probably next year, but, you know, it's completely up to Verizon and AT&amp;T and those.
Well, the only thing that kind of struck me at the time is, is we're all arguing over garbage money, and here comes money coming in on a regular basis that maybe can help us out of our issue. And maybe we need to earmark that with that in mind. Just, just a suggestion, as somebody who's been listening for the last six months or so to all of this, and not saying much, but thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else under public comment? Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. On to old business. First is ratification of ordinance 2018-1562, and ordinance amending Title IX of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of adding a new chapter 8B establishing standards for residential housing within the village of Peoria Heights. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, so we tabled this the last time because we were wanting to make sure that the bathrooms have the proper ventilation for you in here, instead of having a window. So, it does have it. Trustees meeting due to hear being some discussion about not requiring a bathroom staff at window. After further review of the ordinance, the language is written as such. Every habitable room shall have at least one window or skylight which can be easily opened or such other device as will adequately ventilate the room. So if it's got ventilation in the ceiling or something, that should justify not having a window.
Again, I apologize, your administrator, and I should have caught that, but we weren't thinking quick on our feet that night, and we missed that, so it is a window or ventilation.
Yeah.
And the same in the next section for bathrooms. Same exact.
Thank you, counsel.
Yep.
Any discussion on this?
So, not on that specifically, but on the ordinance in general. If there's something that a landlord, I can't think of a specific example, but I've had a couple of landlords asking me questions about, well, one specific question was, a guy's had a third floor rented for like 30 years to the same person, and it's a little shorter than the height restrictions. Would they be able to come in and talk and maybe possibly get a variance for that, or is?
How would that work, counsel?
Without looking closely at the ordinance, I don't know that there's a variance procedure in it, but to the extent there is it, there should be, and, you know, we can always grant appropriate waivers, any kind of situation like that. I think that if nothing else, we would bring it back to the board and just say, look, you know, we've got a request for a variance. I hate to burden the board with 100 variance requests, but I think if it's just a hyper technical thing, then the inspector's going to have the ability to do that just on their feet, if it's a significant variance. You know, and I'll look at the ordinance, there may well be a variance procedure in here, I just don't remember. It's one of the longer ordinances that we've drafted, but I'll make sure that there is a procedure for that.
Okay, great.
So I get, is it fair to say, counsel, we certainly are friendly to business, we want to be friendly to landlords, but have minimum expectations for life safety in place?
Absolutely, right. And safety being the key, you know, as long as, you know, it's a safe habitable structure, if they don't technically comply, I think the board ought to be able to vote and approve a minor variance.
Yeah, I'm not wanting to advocate putting the village at any type of risk whatsoever for a landlord, but I was just asked.
No, good question. Better to talk about it now rather than later, so.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, if you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Rekert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We would be at ordinance 2018-1567, and ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter II of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights, for the purpose of regulating parking of vehicles with a gross weight in excess of 10,000 pounds. Trustee Harn, I would ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. The last time we tabled this, and the reason was over the trucks having to be moved within 30 minutes, and.
If I may interrupt him, can we get the motion, and we'll get it on the floor if you have questions or objections, we'll get to that. Motion approved?
Yeah, a motion, I make a motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Brian.
Okay, so, the reason we tabled it in the first place was having to move a truck within 30 minutes, and I talked with Chief Sutton, Administrator Sutton. I don't know what your exact title is, but at length about it, and we've really, I think I'm the only person that's ever been bugged about it, and that was 25 years ago. I think there's always a situation, trucks are always sitting for more than, a concrete truck dumping out concrete will sit there for more than 30 minutes. A shingle truck loading, you know, shingles on a roof will sit there for more than 30 minutes, because guys can only carry bundles so fast across the roof sometimes. You know, I mean, there's always that situation, but like the chief said, it's really more the spirit of the law than the letter of the law, and I think if we, in order to change this, we would have to go back, because I want to change a couple words to say as long as a truck is being loaded or unloaded, it would be okay to sit there, just not overnight. That's the problem. That's the whole point of bringing this to light, is we've had trucks sitting on the street overnight for days and days. And so we would have to change the ordinance, which I'm not sure it's worth going and changing a whole ordinance over it, because we're really not having any issues with it.
Sure. What I can tell you is, I looked at this, at the Illinois Vehicle Code, to see if we even needed this ordinance. You know, it's one of those that didn't get carried over when we codified all of our ordinances, and the state statute doesn't specifically address parking. It leaves it up to municipalities to decide where, you know, vehicles can park, standing, stopping, all of those things. However, there is a provision in the state code that says, you know, whatever the provision is, whatever your regulation is, if you're loading, unloading, you know, for a reasonable amount of time, that you're not in violation of any of the parking. So I think that, and after talking with Chief Sutton, there's no intention on the Police Department to do that while loading and unloading is occurring, and obviously the nature of the job is going to dictate how long is a reasonable amount of time for loading and unloading. If you're pouring concrete, you know, it's going to take longer than if you're dropping off a small load of lumber, you know. So I think, there's got to be, like you say, you know, discretion in the enforcement, and until there's problems, it's always something we can revisit, but until we get, you know, complaints that the Police Department is unreasonably restrictive in their view of what reasonable amount of time is, I think the ordinance is written as.
Well, a lot of what we do here is complaint-driven, and your chief and I have been in a couple of neighborhoods, one where we had a dump truck loaded with garbage inoperable, so this isn't being implemented to burden anyone conducting a legitimate business, it's being acted upon to address these issues of people who are non-compliant, parking vehicles that are not operable, that are doing great harm to our streets, and no one knows that better than you, so I, I think this is, you know, a no-brainer, and you know very well, our administration, our Police Department are not going to be out looking for people who are delivering lumber or delivering concrete to cite them, it's to correct the behavior of people who are leaving vehicles for long periods of time unattended.
I agree, I.
And how this incident came about was, we did get complaints for dump, on dump trucks parked in certain areas for five, six, seven days at a time, full of debris, so when we went back to pull the ordinance, that's when we noticed, that during the codification was never brought over. So it was, it was complaint-driven, it was reactive, or we would probably be sitting here today and not knowing that that wasn't brought over if we didn't get those complaints, so that's exactly what happened.
The only reason it struck me as something that should possibly be corrected is because you have the spirit of the law, and then you have the letter of the law. So if there is a complaint, let's say one neighbor doesn't like another neighbor, and the guy's trying to get something done, and this is real easy to pull up on your cell phone nowadays. I mean, you can, anyone can look these ordinances, resolutions, right up. They could call and say, hey, you know, it's, they're only supposed to be there 30 minutes. And it's no longer the spirit of the law, it's the officer's going to be required to follow the letter of the law, so to me, it looked like it could be corrected right now, but I'm not opposed to waiting and seeing if we have a problem.
Well, as counsel said, the officers do have discretion, and they use discretion on a daily basis, whether it be one neighbor calling on a neighbor for many reasons, property line disputes, or I could give you probably 100 different examples tonight, but they have discretion on scene, and I know that this department would, would not take issue with somebody that is working on a property or just delivering some property or something, that isn't what it's meant to be for, so, you know, I have no worries that this, we'll be able to address this on the fly.
Well, where did we come up with 30 minutes? Because really, what can you get done in 30 minutes? Not a lot.
It's probably referring to just loading and unloading. Trustee Rekert, I'd imagine, that probably doesn't go into, somebody doing a job on a, it couldn't be there for, you know, all day if they're doing a job, or doing, you know, concrete work, whatever.
Right.
Because I'm sure that was the intent of the ordinance back in the day, and if I remember right, it's 1971.
Yes.
So.
Trustee Rekert.
Soda trucks. Right. They worked a lot faster in the seventies.
Right. I tell you, I tell you what, my job, it takes 15 minutes to set the darn thing up, 15 minutes to break it down, so there's 30 minutes, then I still got to throw the shingles on the conveyor, so, you know, but when you're busy, and they come by and they see you're doing your job, they know you're not just sitting there abandoning, leaving a garlick truck with crap on it, and they understand, he's working, yeah.
As the police chief, if we get to a point where that is our priority in our daily routine, then, then this must be Disney World.
We've succeeded.
So I, yeah, so I think that, I don't have an issue, I understand your concern, Trustee Harn, I do, but I really don't see an issue moving forward, but if the board feels differently, then I think what I heard from counsel is that we would have to go revisit and change the ordinance, because it's already in place.
We would.
It's just, we're bringing it over from the codification, so.
You know, my legal opinion is, anytime you put a time limit on, it's inappropriate, because every circumstance is going to be different. There's, there's a circumstance where 30 minutes is an unreasonably long period of time, you know, somebody getting in and out of the truck, you know, but.
Yeah, UPS.
Then there's circumstances where all day is not unreasonable. So, but, when you read the ordinance together with the state statute, I think the police have more than enough to tell somebody that complains about somebody being there more than 30 minutes, well, in light of the state statute, as long as they're working, loading, unloading as part of, you know, the work, you know, we're not empowered to enforce our ordinance. It's, if they just abandon the vehicle for longer than, and there's no work being done, so.
Got you.
I think, unless and until we get complaints the other way, where it's being enforced too strictly, it should work.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Rekert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Thank you. Next, ordinance 2018-1569, and ordinance, rescinding ordinance 2016-1493, restricting parking on the west side of Miller Avenue, between Manita Avenue and Clayton Avenue in the village of Peoria Heights. Trusty Harn, may I have a motion to approve this?
I make a motion, we approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do. Trusty Harn, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Phelan. This was, this ordinance was brought on because there was a lot of building going on at the end of Miller, near Miller and Clayton, and the contractors, there were so many different contractors on the site, they were parking on both sides of the road, and it got so bad that the plow trucks couldn't get through, and it was just a nightmare. So they restricted parking. And so now, the construction is over, the people that live there would like to go back to parking in front of their homes again, like they did prior to the construction. So I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2016-1493.
Okay. Any questions for trustee Harn, or discussion?
Did we decide, or did we talk about last week, too, that we were going to do something different next time? Wasn't it, we were just going to put up no parking?
Instead of doing an ordinance and making it permanent, maybe just doing some temporary signage, you know, I mean, then...
We got signs, we can put up there, no parking and stuff, so we have to...
Maybe leave it up to the public.
Just, yeah, as long as, like, Sarah and Billy and then stuff like that. She lets me out, and I'm coordinating, we're building, build a big project, like, no parking on the side, so...
Well, you see it all the time, when there's a big project going on, it says, by order of whatever police department, you know, village you're at, town. So I see it all the time, at least.
Yeah, without the village passing a whole ordinance and getting the lawyer involved and everything, it seems a bit much.
Overkill.
Yeah.
That's an interesting sign over on Florence, in between Sheridan and University. And it said, they're doing, I think that's Bueller Home, that's on the other side of First Federated. And there's specific signs that say, no construction vehicle parking on this side of the road.
There you go.
Yeah, that would work, too.
I had never seen that before. It made me think of this ordinance when I saw it.
Yeah, no parking signs, if we got no work, we can get some of those, maybe. Put those on stands, just leave them there.
That's what they were on, was stands.
Yeah, that's what we do, too.
Yeah, they...
Yeah, that way, the residents could still park in front of their houses, just no construction vehicles.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trusty Harn.
Aye.
Trusty Gett.
Aye.
Trusty Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Riker.
Aye.
Trusty Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Finally, under old business, approval of a sidewalk repair program. Trusty Harn, I would ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion, we approve.
And a second.
Second.
Trusty Gett, thank you, sir. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we were planning on going with option two, and I would like to call Mike Casey back up to talk about where the work...
Come up here if you would, or wherever you're comfortable.
Yeah, we talked about it a couple meetings ago, about a guy coming down, he's got the only patent of this saw, and he can cut them. I've seen the jobs done up in Carroll Stream, where my daughter lives, so. It's basically to save money, tearing out all the concrete, and they make like a slant cut. I'm gonna try to get him, not try, I'm gonna have him do a couple jobs right out here, so. But, what was it, $5,000, we went with option two, and he's going to go down Prospect, he already walked it, so there's a few areas that's bad down there, but I'm gonna have him come over here and let you guys make sure you see it, and if it's something that we can do and save a little, you know, save a little money on the concrete and stuff, so. And I talked to him down at the Civic Center at a conference deal, so, the guy, and that's how I got, passed it on to Kyle, then I actually now, you know, talked about it, so. But as soon as we, as soon as we approve it or whatever, he'll be down, he said, so. It won't take him very long to do it, so.
Out here in the park, Cheryl was pointing that out, it will affect the stamped-in grooves, but that, the concrete is Bowmanite, and so they mix the, they mix the color in with the concrete, in the concrete truck, so it'll still be red, it won't be some colored concrete.
Like gray, or, right.
Like a dye on top of the concrete, and when you cut it, you'd see a difference in the shade. And you will see a difference in the shade, because in the middle, it'll be a little bit redder, like it was when they originally did.
When they first put it down.
But that's pretty dangerous, and it's, it's pretty high, you can see it's about an inch and a half from here, so it's worth doing, I think.
It's worth doing, and then that poor lady that was walking backwards up here and hit her head, that was one of the deals, and we took that out and redid the sidewalk there at Kingman and Prospect, so. And there's been a few different areas, too, that, through the years, where people have tripped over them, but save a little money, and then, that's the main thing, and then you don't have to tear out the whole sidewalk or anything, so. But we'll walk down the business district, back up, and then do a few up here and see how it does.
Okay.
And I've seen them done, so it's, it's pretty cool, how we do them.
Questions, trustees? I think you guys explained it very well, thank you. I guess we're ready for the question then. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trusty Harn.
Aye.
Trusty Gett.
Aye.
Trusty Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Riker.
Aye.
Trusty Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Onto new business. The first under new business is resolution 2018-6, a resolution regarding the release of closed session minutes and destruction of closed session verbatim recordings. Trusty Diane Mariscal, ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2018-06.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And counsel, I suppose this under your recommendation?
It is. This is the format that I think is intended by the Open Meetings Act for our, what's supposed to be a semi-annual review of closed session minutes. We can review those minutes in closed session, but we have to adopt a resolution in open session. And so you'll notice the resolution has two exhibits. One, that lists the dates of the closed session minutes that are being released, and the other that has, the second one is exhibit B, that has the dates that aren't being released. And there were none that were appropriate for release, so all of them are going to maintain their confidentiality. The other provision in here is something that's needed to be done for a long time, and that is approving the destruction of all of those old tapes. We've got just tons and tons of decades, actually, of recordings that can be destroyed.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Were those ever released?
What's that?
The older ones? I mean...
We have minutes that correspond with all the closed sessions, these are the recordings, and I haven't gone back and looked at all of the resolutions on which minutes are subject to release. You only have to do it once. So in six-month increments, you look at your minutes and you say, these can be released and these can't, and you never revisit it.
Okay.
So, you know, once it's been decided, and typically most, if there was a reason to go into closed session, there's typically a reason to keep the minutes confidential. Not always, but in any event...
Personnel matters.
What are we doing between January 2016 and October 2017? What are those?
Um...
Because there was a lot. So I don't want those, I don't think those should be released either.
Well, I'm assuming that was addressed previously, because when Margaret forwarded this, this was what she said was the next grouping.
I don't remember addressing that. We've never addressed this, to my knowledge.
You know what, we can go back and bring those forward for a resolution.
So every time we do it, we have to have a resolution?
You do.
Okay, so we probably need to look to see where that resolution was at, that you're talking about that Margaret, to see if it was done.
I don't know that it was, she just forwarded these minutes to me to look at. So I'm, I was provided with October of 2017 up through June of this year.
So tonight, we can adopt what's before us, next month, we can...
Adopt what's before, or my recommendation would be to adopt what's before us, and then we'll take a look.
Next month, we can...
Sarah and I, we'll get together and go back and look and make sure we've done it for all periods of time that were necessary.
Now, does that resolution, will that include, because I don't believe that those minutes should have been, should have left this building. You know what I'm saying? I mean, yes, I think that we should have looked at them, I think we should have went into a session and looked at them.
Correct.
But I don't believe that they should have been handed out to everyone and then left this building.
My, my recommendation is always hand them out so that everybody can review them, and then collect them back up.
Right. Because where could they end up from there?
Right.
And then you're defeating the purpose of what this is.
If I was here, and I would recommend that that only happened when I'm here, if I was here, I would have made that recommendation.
The minutes, the actual minutes, gets handed out to us, they're not as detailed as...
No.
They're brief, they're not detailed.
They're tapes.
True, but they should still stay, you know, in the shop.
I agree, I'm just making that comment also.
Yep.
But I'm very curious of prior, too, we don't want those anywhere out.
We will dig them up.
At least from May of 2017 to current, those should be like huddled and in a box somewhere, so nobody can get a hold of them. So...
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else on this? Okay, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Trusty Harn.
Aye.
Trusty Gett.
Aye.
Trusty Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Riker.
Aye.
Trusty Carter.
I'm saying aye, but an aye only if he's going back to go look at the others.
I, I commit to doing that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that passes. Next, we would be at resolution 2018-07, a resolution to appoint an authorized IMRF agent. Trusty Mariscal, Diane, may I have a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2018-07.
And a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Trusty Mariscal, go right ahead. Tell us what we're doing here.
This would be, every IMRF, IMRF is required to have somebody who's not a police officer, that each agency have a designated point of contact. This person is someone that needs to sign all the forms that we send them, and when we sign up new employees, change insurance, and so on, to be a central designate of the organization. And Stephanie deals with this daily, so the recommendation would be to give this assignment to her. She has taken the course and is certified to be our agent.
So just a police officer can't sign it, or any IMRF participant?
Do we know?
Stephanie, would you come forward, just so everyone at home watching gets to hear your answer, please?
It is up to the board who they want to designate. Matt used to be our authorized agent, but prior to that, it was always the bookkeeper. It switched over at the point where we went from Lucy to Walt to me in a fairly short period of time, and we hadn't quite settled on whether or not I was going to be moving from admin secretary down to bookkeeping, so they designated Matt, because they knew that he would stay in the position for a while. But it can be whatever employee the village...
Does it matter if you're an IMRF participant?
No, I don't believe, no, I'm sorry, I am wrong about that. It does have to be an IMRF participant.
It does.
I believe so. I would have to check on that, though.
Who is not a police officer? So anyone who is, just as long as they are not a police officer? Is that correct?
I think that has to do with them having to be an IMRF participant. None of our police officers are IMRF participants. Everyone who is, that's where the designation lies in, in this particular organization.
Okay.
All right, questions? Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep.
All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trusty Harn.
Aye.
Trusty Gett.
Aye.
Trusty Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Riker.
Aye.
Trusty Carter.
Aye.
All right, thank you, that passes. Next, we would be at approval of a resolution allowing PUEATs, the Peoria, Peeken Urbanized Area Transplantation Study, dues to be paid through MFT funds. Trusty Harn, I would ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan, I make a motion, we approve payment to PUEATs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, trustee Harn, would you explain what we're doing here, please?
Yes. By being a member of PUEATs, they help us get grants. They have helped us get some grants in the past, and it's also, it's a bigger picture. You, by being a member, they're helping bring the whole area together as kind of a common idea. It's sort of like what was being explained to us here earlier tonight at our zoning board meeting, where they're wanting to keep everything sort of symmetrical, where the area is moving forward together instead of in different directions. So there's a lot more to it than just helping us with grants and things, but, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good thing, it's not, it's really not that expensive, and I recommend that we stay with PUEATs.
Okay, thank you. And then, incidentally, Dustin Sutton represents us on the policy committee, and Mike Casey now represents us on the technical committee, and you already have your eye on a couple of pots of money, I think?
Yes. Just getting used to things, but I'm going forward.
You need to know where the money's kept, so.
Yes, yes.
All right, any discussion on this motion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trusty Harn.
Aye.
Trusty Gett.
Aye.
Trusty Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trusty Riker.
Aye.
Trusty Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you all. Next, a request for approval of Azovar Electric Supply Findings. Trusty Diane Mariscal, I would ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve the request of Azovar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I do. Go ahead, Diane.
Okay, so this was a company that we had hired back in March of 2018, to take, to conduct an audit, to see if they believed if there was any place we could save money. Apparently, what they did find is that we have eight separate electric accounts, and we're using two different suppliers for that. One is Home Field, and I think the other one is Calpine. And if we switch all of these to, these eight accounts to one supplier, we could save $8,811.38 annually by doing that.
Is that just for the village? I don't understand what, what does this account, I'm sorry.
We would, we would save that $8,811 by switching, and they get a percentage of that, and I can't, as I sit here, remember what the percentage is.
Small.
20, something like that, for a year.
Is Azovar place gets a percentage?
Azovar gets a percentage for finding it. That was our deal with them, it was a contingent fee, we didn't pay them. If they find savings, they get a portion of it for a limited period of time.
So the supplier might not be either of these?
Exactly.
Did we, we at one time, had everybody in the village, they could select their supplier, and I thought that we, everybody, you could opt out of it, but other than that, everybody went into one, and I thought that was Home Field.
Well, after a certain amount...
So what happens to everybody in the village?
I only know this because of my job, but what happens is, is you start out in a contract with Home, if you don't send back the card, you automatically go to Home Field. If you do send back the card, then you stay with Amarin as your supplier. That contract only lasts for so long with Home Field, and there's a million other electric suppliers out there, and they're calling, there's, you might have received like cards in the mail that said, hey, you want a free month of electric, or we can save you, you know, $50 a month, or $100 a month, or we'll give you a $100 Visa card if you sign up with us. And so, at some point, what I'm assuming happened here, and I don't know which one of the accounts went on to Calpine, Calpine, but that's probably what happened there, so they had, they had offered maybe a lower rate, or some other kind of incentive to go with them. But I don't know who would have gave the approval to do that, or which one of those eight accounts that came from. But after the contract is finished, you can switch. I mean, you can move around, but you are locked into the contract with like Home Field for a year, or sometimes they make it two years, and then...
Is that something that we should hold on earlier, or...
Well, I think that if, I don't know who made the decision to do the switch here. Does everybody get, like, like, let's say, you know, the police department, does he get his own bill down there, or does everything run through you?
So we actually have, these are some of our hires, do you want to go over there?
Please. Remember when it was all just Amarin? You didn't have all this? Yeah.
We actually have approximately 30 accounts for electricity. These eight ones represent our highest electric costs, so it's like the tower, one of the pumps, this building itself, they're all really high-use electrics accounts. And what happened was, initially, we went out to bid for a low electric rate for these accounts, and I think we went through whatever company we went through at the time, and then because we were familiar with that, when Good, when Home Field came to us and said we would like to offer this program for the entire village, we signed up with them. for the entire village, we signed up with them. So, we were already under contract with a different company at the time Home Field came in. When our contract expired, we went back out and got bids renewed, that's where we went. We had a consultant, I believe, might have been Julie Drake, or does Julie Drake do the telephone lines? I know that we had a broker-
Julie Drake, I think, yeah.
It's the telephone lines. We had a broker that helped us find a contract, and they recommended what companies we would go with for the different accounts based on the usage we had. That's how we ended up with these current contracts, and-
Was that something that got brought to the board to vote on?
I believe so, but this is something that would have been done two, three, possibly even four years ago. They were long-term contracts, so I'm not, I don't recall for sure. The rest of our accounts are still through Ameren, so they should actually have Home Field being the ones who provide us the service, because they were lower-level accounts.
Is it for the whole village, like me, or?
No.
No.
No, these are just the villages' accounts that we pay for.
Now I'm on board, I'm like, huh.
Because everybody in the village went with Home Field unless you opted out.
Right. But, you guys have the option to-
Yeah.
-go with another one now if you want to. I mean, you don't have to go with Home Field, that was just, they were offering the lowest rate to our residents at that time. But, they, rates fluctuate all the time, so you can shop around all you want to, just based on the contract, just make sure you look at what the contract says for how long you have to stay with them. And there's usually a pretty hefty fee if you leave them early.
So, some of these, the current rate, even though they all say Calpine, the rates are different?
Yes, and that was based off of how much electricity they expected us to use. So, I haven't looked at that, so I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing there's probably 1505 Gardner on there somewhere. Nope, it doesn't have the addresses. The well, the well down at the end of, the bottom of the hill, that, where they pull up most of the water, it uses a lot of electricity, so they would offer us a lower rate because we're using more. Some of the accounts don't use quite as much, like the tower. The tower pulls a lot in the winter, but not so much in the summer, so it's just barely over that threshold, so they probably gave us a higher rate.
But, really, all we're doing here is just adopting the findings that this company we partnered with, they found almost $9,000 in savings, and that's, I believe, if we approve this, is what we're agreeing to, is it not, counsel?
Yep, they're asking for consent to pull the trigger and change the account.
And how much are they gonna take of that? Is it a percentage?
I can't remember, I don't have that contract in front of me, it's a percentage.
Is it a flat fee, is it a percentage?
Yes, it's a percentage for a year going forward, and then we keep 100% after that.
Okay.
I think that's pretty high at the beginning.
It was like 60/40.
60/40, something like that.
Yeah, I think it might be 60/40, that does sound familiar, yeah.
But still, 3,500, then probably does, rough numbers, could be 34, 35.
Yeah.
So, we'll take every penny we can get.
That's right. It's savings we wouldn't have achieved because we don't have the resources to do this, so.
Okay, anyone else on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Next, the appointment of Stephanie Turner as trustee to the Police Pension Fund. Trustee Carter, I would ask for a motion to approve that?
Cool.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Thank you, Trustee Gett. All right, Trustee Carter, go right ahead.
Just your night, man.
I guess it's pretty self-explanatory, we're-
Oh, right here, okay, sorry. All right, well, I have no idea. Stephanie Turner, Police Pension, do you want to take it over to you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, there's a vacancy, and we got a legal opinion that it was, it is all right for Stephanie to serve on this board, and speaking with our representatives, they're very supportive of her work on the Police Pension Board, so I would support this 100%, and now that we have legal opinion, we're ready to move forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Any further questions?
So, it's an appointed position.
Right.
And he would do- Do you have to live in the Heights?
We may call those appointments.
She does, okay.
It'd be Greg Fletcher, who else is on the Police Pension Board?
We have Officer Brackney, Officer Wilson, represent us on the board, but yeah, they're all, they're all very supportive of Stephanie's appointment, so. The only thing we're waiting on, this has been in limbo for about three months till we got a legal opinion that she could actually serve on the, on the board, and she can't, I'm sorry.
Is that why you're questioning?
Yes.
Is this gonna be outside her regular duties, or will, do they have their meetings usually in the evenings, or how does that work?
It's usually, it's usually within her working hours, the police department.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Next is a request of approval for a stop sign fundraiser on Saturday, October 13th, for Peoria County Animal Services. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the stop sign fundraiser on Saturday, October 13th.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Thanks, Trustee Gett, again. Go ahead, Trustee Mariscal, any explanation necessary?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing that I would like to add is that we have, if we approve this, we have reached our four fundraiser threshold that we set by ordinance, so as long as nobody has any qualms with that, I'd say we move forward with it.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, I thought it was coming up to being the last one, so any-
This would be the last one?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, it says on here that the Lions Club has always requested to hold one, but she hasn't received anything.
I've usually heard from them by now, but haven't received a request.
But if we, if they were to, we could always vote to have another one, right?
And that's a good question, the Lions Club's still very active, and there's a ribbon-cutting Friday, I don't want to get off topic, but for the new fountain that the guys have taken care of, so I think we would want to be consider of them, but they haven't asked yet.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, all that passes. Finally, under new business, request of approval for the use of Tower Park for Walk MS on Sunday, September 9th, 2018. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of Tower Park for Walk MS on Sunday, September 9th, 2018.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gett, okay. Any discussion on that?
Well, I mean, it's such a good job.
All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.